I'd like to say good morning and welcome to the Columbus Municipal School District's regular school board meeting. Please forgive us for not beginning exactly on time, but sometimes things may arrive that you have to deal with immediately. And thank you very much for your patience. This meeting is officially called to order. We do have an established call corps. We have Mr. Jason Spears with us, Dr. Joe Schumay and myself, Yvonne Cox, Mr. Sparks is not able to be here today, and Mrs. Young is en route. At this time, will you please bow with me for our invocation? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you and we praise you for bringing us here today. Dear Lord, we thank you for just bringing us together and we pray that you stay with us so that we may truly decide for all of our decisions that we make, that it is truly in the best interest of our children. Dear Lord, guide our thoughts. Let the words of my mouth and the meditation of my heart be acceptable and light throughout this meeting. This is thy ex in Jesus' name, amen. Stand up for the pledge, please. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the God of heaven, who has created us, and has given us life. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we're on item three. Adoption of the agenda for today, policy BBB, policy BCBD, requesting a motion to approve our agenda today.
Amen.
The motion has been made by Mr. Spears requesting a second. Second. Second by Dr. Schumay. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous, thank you. Moving on to item four. Wow, this is a very special day. Of school faculty and staff recognitions. First of all, I would like to just thank, acknowledge our students throughout the district for all of their accomplishments. And especially during the senior night, our seniors, our beautiful homecoming queen and her princesses, the school plays that's going on, and now the 200 students in K-4 that participated in the essay contest. And today acknowledging the winners. We're so very, very proud of you. And with that, we turn it to Dr. Levat.
Thank you, Madam President. I feel the same excitement that you feel about the students. And I know this weekend that we had an article in paper about our phenomenal accomplishment as students, and I'm sorry, it said Columbus Municipal School District. The great thing is that this was a community initiative. It was a group of leaders within the community, in and out of state, that wanted to do this essay contest. So we think it's even a bigger accomplishment because it was community-driven. So we're very proud of that. And Mary's going to correct the record for us. But thank you. We'll start with Ms. Patient Martin from Fairview Elementary.
Good morning. Good morning. Dr. Levat. Dr. Levat. Misses, stand right here. We're going to have a speaker.
Thank you.
See a little shot. Go over here, let me see.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
See, I can't see it a little out.
When I grow up, I want to be a teacher because I work my plan to learn.
Patients, I got something for you. Next we'll have Mr. Christian Jordan. He can go to microphone right here.
Hello, Christian, thank you. Give him a little, Christian. That's excellent. Your writing is excellent. I read it. Please read it.
He just said, "Thank you."
We want to thank Christian. He was able to read his essay last week in front of the community members that sponsored the event. He did a phenomenal job and talked about what he wanted to do in the future as far as investment and... Trying to remember everything, Mom. A business owner and really walking the shoes of his brother who's doing some great real estate work. So let's give him a round of applause. Now we'll have our nine through 12 winner, Anaya Westbrook from Columbus High School.
Hey, how you doing? I actually forgot to put on someone we don't know. Oh, there's something. My essay is titled, "Where There's a Dream, There's a Path." Every child is born with a dream, whether it be something practical or impossible. There's always something that makes a child hot as spark with the thought pursuing. For me, that dream was being a pediatrician. The idea of working with children and making a positive difference was immensely appealing to me at the time. In fifth grade, I made a career for Fairbord that won first prize in pediatrics. My dream has since changed, but the point still stands. I was barely an elementary school student, but already had a grand dream. A large majority of children have grand dreams as well, though they may differ. Somewhere in the world, there's a child who wants to go to space or go on discovery adventures below the sea. Some may even want to be a prince or princess. All these dreams are achievable one way or another. If a child wants to be an astronaut, they can work toward it. If a child wants to be a marine biologist, such dream is possible. Even wanting to be a princess or prince can be achieved by pursuing acting or even music. Where there's a dream, there's a path for you. As you grow, your dream could curve towards what you want your community to be. Here in Columbus, it's a small town, but that has created our tight-knit community. It's the kind of place where everyone knows each other, but there's a significant comfort in it. You'll never feel completely alone because there's always someone you know. Nevertheless, this city is not perfect. There's no perfect town, and we cannot expect them to be, but we can look for possibilities for improvement. In recent years, Columbus has become a somewhat dangerous place. Crime has skyrocketed in the town. However, what can be said is that because Columbus is such a small, tight-knit town, the overall sense of security is much larger than in larger cities. By bringing together our tight-knit community and advocating for positive change, the dream for our city is a future reality. This advocacy could entail about... People could entail talking about issues that town meetings are proposing a crime reduction plan to the mayor about steps to decrease crime. This safety plan can include anything from campaigns proceeding crime involves as a major health concern or creating a community watch program in town. We have many different options that can make our home genuinely safer. I can't wait until we can reiterate the Columbus title of the friendly city. I jam with Columbus for blessed violence. Besides crime prevention, many families feel as though Columbus is lost on its own. The tremendous hospitality, family orientation, and friendliness of our city will never change. We want our city to reflect this in the best way it can. Despite already being a small town, numerous stores are closing and leaving town. Lead Hall in Columbus was once a mall, bustling with stores, and is now in a bit of a decline. It's primarily empty these days. Even stores outside of the mall like Haymarket, Sears, and many others are now gone. However, stores leaving isn't the only issue. It's the fact that nothing new is coming in. We're moving much and gaining little. With so many empty lots, spaces, and buildings, we can look to possible expansion. As we see our town expand and thrive, the expansion will create a residual hunger for change. By banding together, we can achieve anything. If someone dreams, hopes or dreams for anything, it can be a reality. Even dreams about how you envision your town's future can be a reality. When the community comes together, we craft our town's future. We create the possibility for our town to be genuinely safer. We be able to see our town expand and thrive thus far. I am proud of our town and our achievements, future and past. If we dream for promise to improve, we can undoubtedly do it. Where there's a dream, there's a path.
And our other two participants are not here this morning, but I will say to the board and to the community that their essays, committee work, they have their essays displayed in Washington DC at an art exhibit. And they'll be sharing the art exhibit with students in the Washington DC area. So these essays will go across the country to talk about the hopes and dreams of not only our community, but communities outside of the state and DC area. So I want to commend the committee, commend the children, give them another round of applause.
Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Thank you for your contribution. It's great to see our students excel in all that they do.
I have a couple of comments that won't take very long, but I am extremely heart... I have a heartfelt, I'm touched by the total initiative to do the essays. And with this coming from our community, it's overwhelming. But it's a good overwhelm because it's showing where our community and our schools, we are coming together. And the very fact that it's from K through 12, you're showing our children, she said it so clearly, dreams can be a reality. You know, just putting your thoughts into words is a reality. And I really do appreciate that and hopefully that this will become something that it's not just a one-time, but an annual something that will grow as our district and the community grows.
Again, thank you to the community members that participate and to the participants.
Now we'll move to item five. The CMSB Audit Report, Mrs. Megan St. Clair, CPA. Welcome, Mrs. St. Clair.
Good morning. Do you mind if I can give my mask? I'm Megan St. Clair, I'm with St. Clair CPA. We performed your single audit in my annual statement audit for the fiscal year in June 30th of 2020. And I have to say, even with the complications of COVID, shutting down schools in March, one of the concerns from an auditor is that once, you know, the stay-at-home order was in place, then if staff was working from home and not in the office, some of those controls would last, collapse. And we found here that, you know, we had a clean opinion on your report, which is an unmodified opinion. We found no audit findings. We look at internal controls, we do tests and procedures to give an opinion whether or not your financial statements were fairly presented materially. We also look, have to do state compliance tests. So the state auditor dictates us safe audit compliance for our audit program. And we have to follow that. And there's certain tests and procedures that we have to do. And we had no findings there either. From the single audit aspect, any school district or organization that receives over $750,000 in federal funds is subject to a single audit, and you are subject to a single audit every year. And this year, we tested Title I and what you know as Title II, and there were no findings there as well. So I have to say the audit went very well. And even with COVID complications, we didn't see any break-down in controls. Your business office did an excellent job with what they do. I don't know, do you have any questions for me specific to the audit report?
Or do you have any questions? We've spoken earlier.
I just wanted to thank you for doing it and taking extra care during a rather bizarre time known as COVID. Do you have any suggestions on how we can do it even better?
Well, I will tell you one thing that just came out, and I was telling Holly about it a few minutes ago. The state auditor has finally released their revised state legal compliance audit program. And they've added several new things to that and test them. I'm going to have to, I'm your auditor for '21 as well. So we will be coming in to audit that, and we will have to implement those new procedures, use some new procedures to test those. Like I told Holly, I will send that out to her within the next couple of days. I'm going to send it to all my clients, advising them that they need to really read that, set those new sections and make sure if we're not doing it as a district, that we implement procedures to be following the new regulations and laws that they want us to test.
Thank you. And Ms. Cox, I also want to commend Holly and her efforts since coming on board for last year to have... Our department's changing. She's done some great things. She's on some state committees. And she's always abreast to what's coming. So I just want to give her a round of applause for all of her work.
Thank you very much. And, you know, I enjoyed it, and we will be coming back in at some point. We are ready to, we'll be off for '21 as well. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Well, great job. Well done. Thank you, St. Clair. Now we're, moving on to item. Excuse me. Moving on to item six. Requesting a motion for close determination for executive session. The motion is made by Mr. Spears, your second, require any discussion. Please you now.
with the effective boards to ask questions. And the second one,
To be taken. I think one thing that our board does, which I think is good is we do, we do come prepare to meetings and that was emphasized over and over again, the importance of coming prepared. The other thing that I'd like to sort of give our board in our district to pat on the back for is we mentioned the fact that we have review meetings and quarterly meetings and from the, the other people or the other boards that were there, they seemed quite surprised at that. As if that was something for them anyway unusual and our, my, I can only speak for myself, but I find them extremely helpful because we are, we are constantly receiving a lot of information and I don't see how one board meeting, well, I can't do it in one board meeting a lot. So I know this is extra work for the CMSD staff and faculty, but it helps, it certainly helps me as a, as a board member have a better grasp of, of what's going on. And once we know what's going on, then we can make better decisions. So I found it very helpful and thank y'all for doing the extra work to get us, you know, in position we can make the right decisions for the kids.
I love the conference. It was, it was a great, should say it's something to whet your appetite. And that's exactly what the conference did. It whetted my appetite when it comes to learning board responsibilities and the way we communicate. You know, are we communicating properly with the district that we serve? And if we're communicating properly with our parents, our teachers, our community, communication. And that was one big word that just stood out with me that I have several, several things on. With that, thank you all very much for attending. I really appreciate us coming together in those ways. And I look forward to the, oh, leadership conference and we'll be doing it virtually, but Mr. Spears will be attending in person. And I know that we'll have great things to tell you in December. Moving right along, discuss, uh, discussion and consideration of capital improvements. Mr. Little, how you doing this morning?
Good, good. How's everybody?
Doing good, good morning.
Should have before you list those items that we have as far as capital improvement. These are big items that we have left open right now. The LS Technologies, that's on the baseball field, speaker system. The basketball gym is about halfway done, halfway completed right now. The JB Construction, that's on the building and the bleachers at the high school. About every time we go in there and decide to come get them, it rains. And they don't want to tear the ground. It's kind of soggy back in there after it rains. So we're trying to get that scheduled. United Exterior, that's pressure washing. Athletics is about ninety-five percent complete. There's still a few sidewalks and he is scheduling in McKellar when he can get started on that project. The last two is Franklin and they're going to work in conjunction with, as the roof is put on. Jay Morgan has got the replacing the rotten wood part. Group development is on the painting aspect of that job. Pretty much what we have right now as far as capital period is still out there.
Question, Mrs. Young?
Yes, um, is number three, the United Exterior? Oh, is that just athletics only or does that include all of the building?
That was just the, uh, the around football field, the bleachers, all the concrete that was right there. Presently looking at soccer complex, softball and baseball, we want to put that in another project before those seats are sold.
Okay. And my final question is the auditoriums and is it cooking? Franklin, did we, did we ever get started on those or are we waiting or?
The Cook Auditorium has been painted.
Okay.
Everything is completed there. That's been several months ago. We got that completed. Franklin, uh, we're gonna have to get in. There's a lot of work that's gonna have to be done in that auditorium. But we just had some work going on. We haven't got
So when, when you mentioned that about the, uh, sports complex, that, that area, you remember when we did the tour out there last October, wasn't it? Uh, we were looking at the track, the track part of it. Has that been addressed?
We met with the company a while back and they were looking into the warranty aspects and everything on that. The guy actually came out and showed them the areas that were in question for the warranty, but they have not sent us anything back.
Okay. So how do we follow up with that? Excuse me. Do we follow?
Me, me, Jack, I'm gonna go on the look. What you saying originally was due to COVID, they couldn't get this material and that material show that it was gonna be delayed, but they had agreed to come in and reduce the force of the track that is, uh, damaged. So we get need to follow up again on it and just keep where they are for getting the materials.
And, and you know, with time going by, uh, I don't want them to say that the warranties expire.
Well, the warranty accident fired Matt off, but we got, we got in there prior to the, uh,
Expiration. I remember discussing that.
Yeah.
So all of that's noted with them and us?
Yeah, man.
We have it in writing.
Yeah, man.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Go on.
I would, I would say, I mean, just the, the track itself, when you come out of the field house, I know they have mats that come across the track right now. I mean, it's almost completely destroyed.
Okay, the mats?
Because there's like mats that, that basically live in the field where they come down off of, from the, um, field house to go across and I'm sure it's the cleats to keep them from tearing up the track there.
Yeah.
And then there's another mat that goes across that's kind of like the big gate where you can come up, come down by the bleachers. But as far as if you look at the track condition, I mean, it's like, it's like the red material was, you know, how the track material was simple. I mean, it's, I mean, it's almost like just totally black. I mean, I don't know if it's because it's just shredded away, washed away. I mean, it's just in really terrible shape. I mean, it looks as bad as when we, before we did it the last time and repaired it.
And, and I'm saying just what ended up happening is what, what he tells us is that he said that usually the hose that tracked down is not wasn't good. So that was the, that's what caused that piece. And it's peeling around that track. That was some of the things that we did address with him when he came out and he pulled it up and he verified that it wasn't even, and that, you know, that was gonna be corrected by the company.
Because if you remember, we replaced the track. The reason we did is because we wanted to host track meets. And I mean, since we completed the construction of it, I mean, I don't know, I haven't made good account, but I would say we have held very many track meets there. Because right after they completed it, it started having issues. I mean, water sitting on the track and creating low spots and
I remember that. Um, Do you, do you remember something about, I'm going back now, some years ago? Um, be- before, I have a good time. Years ago, when that stadium was built and the way that the city drainage is, um, the stadium is built like this and the drainage, however the city drainage is, is that's why we are having problems with so much water there. When we went over there, I went back and started asking different people who were in administrative roles during their time. And they said, that's why we're having problems with it. And I, I've forgotten exactly how it was approved anyway for the stadium to be the way that it's set up. Have anybody else? Anybody else know, Mr. Dunn?
There was, it was actually a claim made against the architecture. It was, it was a settlement, basically. Statue of Liberty, I should have all
Long gone, yeah.
Issue here was probably the second shouldn't have been built there first.
I, I was worried about that. Why is all of that water standing?
Which means that, that we have to fix it. We probably continue. If there's water along the track, the tracks, not going to last long, long, yeah. That happened basically, Lewis, in the same kind of situation.
So we're gonna be in this type of what you're dealing with continuously? Because of the, that's why it's so important to really do, uh, what is, what is it called? Due diligence. Due diligence, your background work to find out, research, even when you're buying a house. You know what they tell you when you buy a house? Make sure it ain't been on a, uh, Indian real estate. Okay. That takes it seriously. When we purchased our home, we were living in Stone Mountain in Georgia. That was one of the main things that was on the title, title search. We were bad. And it's, it's, okay, I'm gonna leave that alone. But I think now we have so many repercussions of, uh, prior things that happened in our past. And, uh, this is something, you know, uh, my God, back during the day when I was working in the district and that's been some years ago, Lord. But
I mean, I, I guess the question is, I mean, because the track, it's right behind the high school. Been there around the football field and everything. I don't know if it's the same size around the football field. Um, there, so.
You know, and now, and now, right now, um, I know we still have some cradle problems that we'll address at a later time. I call them craters when you drive them. But that's still on the list also.
She had to put, put survival down as it tears up. That's your only.
Oh, one other question I wanted to ask, and I'm sure I just didn't check mine out. At Columbus High School, that student walkway, remember when we did that walkway from Caldwell, from the Caldwell entrance to, uh, McKell and, uh, the roofing and all around there? Has that been repaired?
I've met with Graham Roofing and Hollis Roofing. And while Hollis has not came out, Graham Roofing is working on Callow House Roofing. They are working on a quote to rebid, I mean, to replace the tech room that's up there. And that we're going, went ahead on down to McKell. When we got up there and got to looking at it, it's just as bad. So the price that I'm getting is for the whole complete walkway. Right in the middle is not as bad, but both ends, especially the hospital wing is the worst. But if you're gonna replace two there, you might as well come on.
Go on the way down.
But we're going, it's just kicking the can down the road if you don't go ahead.
And we did get all the lighting. You told us the lighting was done.
Yes.
Yes, that's Fine, yeah. Mr. Little, just a quick question on the Franklin, uh, wood and painting. I mean, you probably said it, but I didn't hear it. Has that started? So we're already like, what percentage done?
What they're waiting on is because, well, as far as the wood part goes, they're gonna work in conjunction with the roofers.
Okay.
They finally got the contract, but the problem is, is they're waiting on supplies. Uh, because if you remember, I'm, I may have said something, I may not. The gutter system on the front of that school was all wood and it's lined with like plastic lining inside of it. So they're gonna work a little bit ahead of the roofer. So as they get the new wood, it doesn't sit. And get rain going, the roof is gonna come behind and go ahead and line it as they go. And then we'll have the painter come in.
Got it.
So it's really, it's really just
It's a sequence.
Roof gets started, that's when all that, we've already talked with all the contractors to have that. So when they start, they'll all be ready to get on it at one time.
Thank you. Thank you. And you know, thank you very much for, uh, drove by Hunt. Drive by Hunt. I won't say I do drove by there, I'm sorry. But, uh, whenever I'm in route, really. And it looks so much better. Thank, thank you very much. Even, you know, trimming those crepe murdles down, cleaning around the building and that big lot over there, although it's still some tall, tall stuff over in there. Is water over in there or something?
Yes, ma'am. That, everything that we cannot understand anymore, everything we believe is just, it's a low spot right in the middle. And we tried to get all in there, but it stays near about where. You may get a chance once or twice a year to get it. It's right in the When you sell the tile grass, it's all wet. You can't even walk there.
One little quick question.
Yes, sir.
Um, speaking over at Hunt, different things, the, what happened over there just a week or so ago, I guess? Did that affect any units that are gonna be usable after we start making that transition? Or is that gonna be as prepared to get?
That, that is all gonna be added. What they did is about two, maybe three months ago is when we noticed units missing. So we called and had a report and then on that, uh, what was found the other day is they were, um, they had cut the plumbing, the copper, uh, they had stripped out the electrical pounds. They, it's, it's a mess over there.
So all of that's gonna have to go back into the restoration costs? And we don't have any estimates as to what that amount's gonna be?
Yes, uh, well, the day that we found out, uh, some of the grounds guys called me. I immediately called nine one one and they did catch the, they called three out of the four that were there. Um, went back the next day, uh, with one of my maintenance guys that were walking through and there's some extensive damage as far as wiring, plumbing.
The longer it's sit, the worse it's gonna get. It's been sitting there now, how many years?
February twenty, oh, two thousand nineteen.
It's been sitting there, wow. And if, if you can take a house and it can be a decent home and no one lives there, it's going to deteriorate eventually. Um, thank you very much. But with the, uh, Hunt, uh, transition and the Hunt reveal, um, I have a comment or request that I'd like to make. And, uh, I believe this has been like board discussions from time to time that has come up. So it's a board dis- uh, concern. I would deem it a concern if several board members have mentioned it from time to time. Uh, during the total Hunt reveal, could we, uh, receive a, I'll say, and I may not word it properly, get my words right, okay? But the financial statement of the total Hunt rebuild, uh, that's to be prepared for the board and likewise, uh, while we are actively rebuilding Hunt, if we could receive something in the form of a timeline checklist, that would help, I would say me. And I'm sure it would help the rest of us as we check off, as we work through the process.
And Ms. Cox, what you just found is, is, is exactly what FEMA and Nemo will detail with us will have. And Ms. Cox, what you defined is, is, is exactly what FEMA and NEMA will detail with us, will have. Um, Taylor and I just spoke, will have, uh, meetings every two weeks, and that's exactly what they do. They meticulously look at every, every step of what's being done, we look at everything fiscally, and then, then it's drawdown. So that's just a part of the FEMA process, so you will all get that detail, but, um. Once we engage with FEMA, NEMA, that would be, um, something that'll be easily done, and Holly will be a partner, but FEMA is very detailed about that. What's your request, what the board's request?
Okay.
I just have.
Okay.
So what are we, so what are we doing to try to do, I mean, criminals will be criminals. I mean, that's just the way it is. But what are we doing to try to have added safeguards to when the rebuild starts, or where it is currently before it starts? To ensure that we, as best we can, prevent other criminals from doing those type of things as the pro- the, uh. Uh, the proj- project progresses?
We, we are, we can, um, talked to the mayor, I know we had.
Camera.
Uh, pardon?
There's a camera now.
Yeah.
Uh, to access.
Yeah, and, and just know, this is, this has been happening in the community, people have been taking people's copper all through the community, it's like, it's been very prevalent in our community, but. Um, asking for, uh, additional police requests will assist us. Um, and I think once we are on, we have the contractor, um, on board, we can ask for a little bit more detail on securing that property, and some more security detail from the city.
That's, that, what she's saying is true. The, the main thing is, is right now, there's no power over there. Uh, so I mean, as far, as soon as the power gets, you know, we can, uh, have some cameras put up. Uh, we do monitor it, uh, but actually, the day that we see questions, that the people got arrested, I actually had four guys working on the property that day. That did not know those people were there. Uh, they just happened to walk out of the building, and there was two of my guys standing there, and they yelled at them, and it took off. Luckily, we. But when we randomly walked through the buildings, I drive around it several times a week, just trying to see, you know, what's going on, uh, or anything is going on. Try to keep an eye, but as far as actually being able to keep them out, that's, like I said, they're just gonna, I mean, ninety percent of it doesn't have windows.
Right.
Uh, so it's just, it's hard to keep them out. Once they get in there, you can ride by, 'cause I was standing. Uh, in a spot where one of them, well, they took the electrical panel off, and set it on the floor, and just gutted everything out of it. You, if you're not actually, 'cause I could stand there and look across the road at things, but, I mean, you, and I started driving by that day, and I was looking, I said, well, if they were standing there, I'd have never saw them. And they're right by the window. Uh, but to answer your question, well, I've got it, they even stole the gates off the fence. So I've gotta get more gates put back up. Uh, and that's basically all we can do right now, and they'll cut the, they'll probably place locks on the gates when they were there, you change your locks. And I mean, they just, they just continuously get in. Uh, they're right around and monitored, uh, and we're there, you know, probably during the summertime, we were there at least, uh, every two weeks working. Trying to keep the grass cut down, but like I said, they were in the building, and my guys were there working, they didn't even know they were there. So, I mean, that's, do make a point not to go in the buildings by ourselves. But we just steadily, that day, I actually rode around the building like an hour and a half before they called. They're just like, say, if they want in, they're gonna, it's not hard for them to get in the building, they don't have windows. Just.
What's left to steal?
Well, there's still some copper.
Is there any way to protect that?
Without windows.
This offended the contractor to engage and get.
My parts are actually good. But people get there working, and we get some power going with the first cameras up.
Yeah, I, I got that, it's just, until we get there, there's not.
We're just gonna, we're gonna fix the gates, fact that they settle, keep locks and, and all that, and just monitor the rest of it, can you?
I have any other questions?
I just wanted to emphasize the, the square footage and roofing projects that's on the second sheet. Um, looking at these assets, we're gonna have to engage an arch- architect, but as you see, that the price hasn't waited from when we first initially looked at the roofs. The roofs, a- as opposed to now. Um, and I just wanted to look at the estimated cost of Columbus High being, um, six point seven million dollars for repair, Hunt being one point one. Sale being one point two, two point six relative to Cook, Brandon, one point one, and so Spirit, one point five. We will be engaging and trying to look at these things a little at a time. Um, I will say that we continue to have roof leaks throughout the district, and so if we continue to wait as far as repairing some of these things, the price is only gonna inflate, so. Um, sooner than later, we'll start to look at what will be next once we engage an architect, and able, and able to, um, start looking at these, these are gonna have to be repaired, so. I want to look at this for future, that we're gonna have to start making some decisions definitively to get some of these roofs repaired, because, um, it's an extensive amount of money. But if we don't, if we don't start the process, the situation will continue to be worse. We had, we had a stu- a, a teacher injured from a roof leak at a high school in recent, so we have to get this, this, these things repaired and. And start thinking about it fiscally, about the decisions we need to make in order to get them repaired.
When it was then, it says then and now.
I'm sorry, I didn't put that on, it was, uh, Dr. Leo did a presentation in two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
Two thousand.
Okay, now it's going up since then.
This is just, this is just square footage, uh. At twenty-five dollars a square foot is the price that I was giving, just as a budget number, that does not include if you have. Higher priced material, or it could go up or down according to when they get the roof off, is there any damage coming to be? This is just, I've got a piece of paper tells the square footage to be built, so that's, that's kind of what I.
So we get a request for proposals on architect?
We have, well, we, right now, we're doing, um, our, preparing, requesting proposal for asset. So during that time, um, that would be pleaded through the board, but we're doing it for asset now. So we may need to engage, or we may say, once we select that architect, and we'll go from there and connect and engage with the rest of the project, because a lot will, will, a lot, there'll be, you know, things that are.
So roof is covered in the asset fund?
No, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying, for the projects that we, no, they're not, because it's not air quality and COVID prevention. What I'm saying is, once we engage with architect, and they're, and they're working with our district, well, we, we will ask the board then, probably, can we engage architect and things that the district will. You follow what I'm saying? Because they're always working with the, the district.
Hmm, I guess my question is, because that seems like two separate things, so, so we're asking for an RFP on the asset related, and then we have district related, so we're, we're just gonna take the same architect?
No, not definitively, we'll look at it as, but we need to get the asset funds first, because we're on the cycle. I'm just saying, we'll be looking at this quickly, but we're gonna get through the first RFP with asset, and then go from there, so it's just gonna take some time, but we'll go from there. Any other questions? And I will come to the board too.
Any questions?
And we're we in that process? Yeah, they're working.
It would be great if asset funds could all do this.
And I'll say this, there's a lot of people that go to prison, not doing things right, we're gonna do the right. Because that's it, be people that got.
That wouldn't help any.
It is unbelievable the kind of things people do to, to get money.
I mean, ours.
But I mean, you, you look at these federal funds coming in, what's it, ARC funds or something that the states are doing?
Yeah.
I mean, Alabama's taking theirs to build prisons, because they've seen what's happened.
Yeah.
But there were too many people who were staying in the. I would also say misuse, they're gonna audit very detailed.
But then, you know, that's a difference, you say in Alabama.
Yeah.
We in Mississippi, you know, it's a bigger.
I mean.
That includes. It makes it difficult, doesn't it? Right, moving right along, might get overwhelmed. The contractual renewal dates, during, uh, would we have any question concerns concerning, uh, our contractual renewal date? Mrs. Young? Um, Dr. Labatt, tell us if you would, I know we've gone over this before, exactly what Dr. Page does in the district.
She, we hired her to do asset two, asset three, her contract should be in more minutes. Asset two, asset three is some other responsibility, but it was detailed for a report. Here's? Yeah. Yeah, is it, is, you should have got a contract, we first renewed her, her contract, the details are in there, in the board report, or your board resources.
Do you think she'd be able to, this is connected to something I was gonna la- ask later, um. Do you think she would be able to give us a more in-depth presentation of what we propose to, to spend the money on?
Sure, uh, we, 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 yeah, she can do that, we can probably send it to you, we'll send you an email.
I mean, because twenty-three million is a lot of money.
Yeah. And, and as you see, it don't take long to spend it, I'm telling you, it don't take long to spend it.
Well, I'm sure it doesn't, but I, I just don't know exactly where it's going.
Yeah, we can get a report.
There is way to make for us paying her, she could kind of actually present, can that answer questions?
Sure, sure, um, what we could do is just, we'll, we'll work on, and then I'll send you all email.
Okay.
In there.
Yeah, and then maybe she can come and talk to the board.
Right, and it'll be so much easier, because we, uh, we have this RFP done.
Now, she's still working with the special ed department or no?
Yes. Yeah, she's helping some of this.
So she's gonna go viral?
Yeah, being superintendent. Any other questions?
Um, actually, I do have one. Uh, the, is it? Top of page two on the contract list, there's a Galloway Chandler McKinney, McKinney Hunt Risk Insurance that says pending, and it ran out on October fifteen. So what's up with that?
The problem that we have with that is, the contractors, like, the foot was already moved, right? The contractor was supposed to hold the risk insurance on it. Uh, I've been in constant contact with the company, and they have been trying so many different markets, because. Pretty much for a year. I mean, they, they've done some work in there, but they wanna call it, they didn't build it. And as we go, we had a really hard time coming up with an appropriate, um, quote for us. But actually, that's what, he's been emailing us more than anything, wanting more reply, and it is still, and it is very scary.
Especially since the building's being gutted by thieves. Okay, I just wanted to see what was, thank you. Any other questions?
Now we'll move on to, uh, item C, goal updates, policy B, A. Goal updates, policy B, A. Student attendance report. I'm sure you've had an opportunity to check all of this. School safety report. Two, the first part is, uh, student discipline, from the high school to the middle school, elementaries.
Anything? Yeah, no, it's okay, um, student discipline, thank you very much for making that more readable. Because for a couple of months, um, one month anyway, it was indecipherable, appreciate it.
Okay, um, when it comes to, uh, discipline, uh, Dr. Labatt, you mentioned something about, hey, right now, it is you, Dr. Dito, and someone else, I believe. That's basically your committee, so, uh, that led me to believe that you're looking at the discipline that's at the high school and the middle school. And when you're pulling together different community initiatives and anything else that we can pull together. So if there's any way that you need any volunteers, uh, I'm available.
Yes, ma'am, and I appreciate it, we are gonna be working on restored justice, and we're gonna work on our critical response team, since we've had so much done by the, the district. Because we can't do it on our own, deal with families, deal with the, the impact on the community, it's just a whole nother job, so we're gonna be working on that critical response team. And getting some people together, so we can kind of deal with the issues when they happen.
Because that is one thing that the board is really interested in, is to try to work in the, uh, district at various times. So that we are, you know, really assisting, or being a help, because it did say that we are supposed to visit the schools. But not just to walk around or go to a program or something, but actually, we're here to help. And, uh, please feel free to engage us in any opportunities that, uh, may come up. Dropout report, number three, the dropout report, any questions, board members? The safety report. Dr. Labatt's update. One hour's been well spent, I think we can just give that to.
I think we can't.
Oh, I'm just teasing.
Oh, it's a good joke for me. It's not gonna take long. I owe you one, Ms. Cox. All right. All right, that was our, our district goals. Then we go to our twenty twenty-one goals, all this has been sent to you all as redundant information. Then those are successful school district initiatives, pretty much same. Then, uh, these are some things we did, we've done in recent National Board Certification for teachers at Columbus, that's going really well. We had Donna Porter to visit our kids for professional development last week, and they love it, they're more engaged about wanting to be teachers. Because she talked about classroom management, other initiatives, so they're enjoying it, so part of the process that they go with their mentor to professional development, then they discuss in general. So they're gonna have like four or five professional development sessions, they have to have a classroom visit in the fall or spring. And then we have six students that are eligible for MUW dual enrollment teaching program, because we are, they're gonna start their pre-professional, uh, teaching courses while they're in high school. Uh, so we have six that will be taken next semester. Along with, we'll have eighteen students taking management information system to continue our initiative with technology. Um, they will be at MUW for next semester, so we're trying to enhance and expand our dual enrollment program and build stronger partnerships with MUW.
Dr. Labatt?
Yes.
Well, Ms. Cox, I asked a question. Yes, ma'am. Uh, about the national, uh, board certification, which I think is a great initiative. Um, I guess my question would be, have we got any safeguards in place, and I hate to sound, I was gonna say anyway, safeguards in place? So that we don't spend the money to get somebody nationally board certified, and then they take that credential and leave the district?
It's just like any other professionals, it's part, it's part of it. Like I go to professional development, they go to professional development, you cannot hold anybody to a contract a year here. And so it's just an investment, we just have to hope that the district get better, that people stay, we can't do it. You know, um, I'm, I'm having some great professional development, uh, all the system principles have, it's just, it's just open, you, it's not, it's nothing you can do, but continue to do what's right and correct that they say, but. Um, you can't stay, you have to stay for a year or two, it's just, we're not legally, we can't do that.
Okay. Dr. Labatt?
Yes.
On a grade level, um, reading, uh, what type of, uh, systems do we have in place, like for our third graders?
Third grade, so we, um, have a new high, high qual- high quality instructional material, my view, the teachers absolutely love it, it comes with. My view, the teachers absolutely love it, it comes with basal readers, it's the teacher, that students are using, the teachers actually love it, they had a lot of great input in it, so. We have some great instructional material. On top of our literacy initiatives, I'm sure you've seen us hyper on liter- on literacy from our pa- our, our reading liaison, that's been with the year planning. Thank you to Holly and Mr. Murray, and Dr. Page was on that committee because she was a, a elementary, uh, principal. But we worked on initiatives of what we, what we need to do to talk to parents about literacy. So outside of it, giving our students a library of books, now we're really working on parents, and it's starting to make a shift, because now parents are saying, what else do I need to know to teach my child? Because a lot of it has to do with things we can do at home to assist them. So, um, part of our job description, we were doing all this planning is for them to do one school meeting and one community meeting, that's why we saw the boys and girls. So, at each school, those, those reading liaisons are responsible for doing that. But, um, at third grade, we are gonna have some, you know, some contention there, but I, I believe the brain is the magnetic muscle, and we're doing a lot of great things to get our students back on grade level. We've been, uh, we've been, uh, laser focused on engagement and grade level, uh, instruction, making sure our lesson, lesson plans and standards are being taught at grade level. And acceleration, it's been a huge focus, um, because of, of what we're dealing with with students, and so. Um, I'm seeing a lot of the things, I feel like our community accountability indicators are making us get back to pedagogy and instruction. And it's really helping our principals be more vigilant about what's important, um, in the classroom and it relates to, um, teaching. And our after-school programs going well too, those are some other things we're doing. And we're very excited about some of the other community, um, after-school programs, because anytime they're engaged, it's helpful.
Is the after-school attendance been?
I, I think it's a pretty, we've gone down to two days a week because of buses, and, and like I told the principals, we'd rather have quality than quantity. So then being there and having great activities, whether extracurricular activities and academic that. We've, in some schools, they're still three days a week, but they, they're, they're partners, they get picked up, but, um, for the most part, how many are three days a week?
I think it's two of them that still doing three days.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, so, this just talks quickly about the, what we're working with, with, uh, Scott Colone's office, where we're restoring justice, had a very good meeting, Dr. Dito attended. Um, we're starting some of the things that, that we talked about earlier today, about working on ways to, um, support students that are at risk. Through restorative justice, and so we'll be implementing that program at the middle school, and you can probably guess why, but, uh, but we are excited about that program, but it's a wraparound program. It works on social emotional wellness, and, um, we're excited about it, um. Uh, we're also gonna continue to work on our critical response team, we did have another shooting community, it's been a student, and so we're working on trying to make sure that, that this doesn't fall on me and Dr. Dito and a couple of people. Be people that intensely get in community and try to stop the wave of, of some of the things that are happening that are violent in the community, so. And that's just, like, we have to shut down, like, once you're contacted, um, it happens, and, um, it's been consistent since arriving. All right, partnerships with the W, that's just talking about some of our dual enrollment programs that I mentioned before. In addition to, um, we're gonna work on looking under the hood for our junior senior level courses, and really looking at our math E O A courses, and looking at freshman courses. To bring more rigor to our, um, our junior senior courses, because generally, after the assessment is taken, some of the rigor are taken out of the, um, instruction. So we're really gonna focus on working with the W saying, what, what are some things they need to know before they leave? Because when you say someone's college ready, that means they shouldn't have any remediation when they go to college, right? And so we want to ensure that those courses are rigorous, and they're purposeful, and our students are getting what they need, so we're gonna work with a partnership with the W to make sure that we are getting the things that they need in order to do well on those freshman courses. That's our, uh, enrollment for November. All right. And this, this one did not, was not updated, you received the updated one last week, I mean, this week, yeah, and our numbers are going down. And that goes to goal four, this is all redundant. Continue to do our parent, uh, meetings, um, the community has taken over some of the things with truthful eyes, and things are happening there with community development. That are deep entrenched into some of the same people that are working with the S A, that I think is going to be meaningful and purposeful for the community. We're probably gonna ask some outside people to continue to work with us to get some deliverables. Um, we, community development is so important, and we have some great leaders in the community that wanna see the Columbus Municipal School District. Successful because they know not only the human impact, but they know the economic development impact of the public schools being a great system. The, the Columbus Air Force Base are just awesome. Every initiative we have, they are there, our leadership series is going extremely well, they continue to read the schools and, uh, allow our students, um, into, uh, on the base, and they come here. And I'm so proud of this district for including and listening to that as a, as an option, because it has made a difference, we had, um, about twenty of our students to take the aspect in the last couple of weeks, and they blew it out the water, they did extremely well. So we'll continue to make that a viable option for our students, and I think having that category, um, really, uh, levels the playing field of options and opportunities for students.
One quick thing about the airbase, um, I met the fellow that's in charge of the STEM part of the, um, Wings Over Columbus coming in March, so. And I think that's a big opportunity for our students.
Right, you know, I met with them other summer about three to four times, there's not anything we asked them to do that they haven't done, and they enjoy it. And I think from a national security standpoint, they understand how important it is for public schools to be successful, they get it, they understand, they value it, they feel it's important. They teach leadership skills, and it's amazing how well they connect with students at these leadership series, they really, really connect with them, so whether they decide military or not. It's been really good to, for them to talk about not only, uh, military enlistment, but, um, civilian jobs. Civilian jobs that they, um, may be interested in getting into post-graduation. Uh, we think that's very important for us to create as many options as possible for post-graduation for our students, and be open and broad about it. Did you just, um, professional development, comp's training is our, um, what we've been doing, we've been really working hard. F D L's been the emphasis for this district prior to pan- the pandemic, so that's why the systems are so entrenched and they're going really well. Is because we had emphasis on it, because some of the reaction to the, uh, the gun violence in the district very early on, so. The systems are in place, and now we're doing the support, uh, working with Vanderbilt has been great, um, working with, um. National Public Schools has helped us really integrate those systems really well, and we're gonna continue to get better. The state having F D L standards helps with it, with it, and we're gonna continue to have training and, um, work on, um, building, um, healing the heart so we can teach the mind. Uh, Donna Porter is here, she's doing F D L, and DJ has been here, so, um, they've been in camp, on campus, really working on some great things. They continue to have already training, I sat in one of those just last week at Salem Elementary, and that was going real well, some of the new things they have in programming is really good, it relates to data. Um, the system principals are all initial training, um, a lot of principals, assistant principal get bogged down in discipline and don't understand the entrench of creating a system. And a good principal can create a system from beginning to end and follow through with it. And so that's an important part of them learning while they're being a practitioner, especially assistant principal, you don't want them to go into a principalship and not understand any of that. They have to know how to create systems, understand the pedagogy is important, best practices and research early on. Um, we also have through the leadership training administrator from Laurel Magnet School of the Art, Dr. Pelton, who is an A school and got gains, been obtained gains during COVID. At a magnet school in Laurel, it's the only magnet school, and she was A school two years in a row, and she's been working with our principals for best practices, she was mentioned at our review meeting, she's an excellent communicator, a great teacher, and an outstanding administrator. Curriculum update, we continue to do the reconstruction, um, program, we revamped the pre-case standards, it's a standards-based board, we're finishing, um, benchmark assessment, and we've had M T S S road show. The M T S road show consists of Dr. Dito, Dr. Page, Ms. Murray, and what they do is they go to each school, oh, Ms. Schomper, I'm sorry, it's the behavior side. And they evaluate where each principal is as related to N T S S, so that is a good question for a board to ask, how are you doing your implementation of N T S S? We adopted a policy in two thousand nineteen, what's expected is very clear, we have gotten support in professional development related to N T S S. And some of the issues we dealt with earlier, when that system is in place, students do not fall for the, fall for cracks. So it's important for our principals to understand how important it is, and it's, it's a great process, and we, we're gonna continue to do so, they did a great job of evaluating the program and giving our students, uh, uh, he- healthy critical advice. On how to make the system better at each school, and thank you to that team.
Can I ask a question real quick? Wow, so long ago, uh, M T S S, how are you? All right, now we have a special services director and assistant director, how are they engaged in this process?
He gets the tier three and has to do D R T.
Yep.
To the district, it's district review team.
Yes, sir.
They would, they would end up coming in then, and if there's a situation where we need child find, they would, we would fall into that process.
Okay, that's when they're brought in. Because with it being new people in, in these positions, especially our assistant director, you know, uh, we, we, we want a training period from the beginning up. So that they would actually understand the complete process. So, and you know, I know that, uh, once tier three is not in, ineffective, or whatever child find goes on. But we also want our people to out, to have total understanding of it.
Right, and, and in, in the case of this, if you're tier two, tier one, tier two. We're getting, uh, them to understand, you know, what to look for, of the things to look for when they put those behavior plans in place. And how to, uh, I guess you would say, uh, adequately, you know, do those behavior plans as teachers. And, and making sure that they're, they're run, they're doing everything that's prescribed in that behavior plan. So if it doesn't work and they move on to tier two, then those teachers are still working that behavior plan, still trying to move forward with it. And there's two things that can happen, they can go to tier three, or they can move on back down to tier one. But if they move to tier three, then that's gonna give us that red flag to, you know, move them towards that child find process. And, and putting them into that, uh, D R T, check, checking to see if there is some type of disabilities that's causing the behaviors. Or causing the, uh, you know, the academic, uh, I guess, no, the, the layup.
You have an excellent understanding of it, but, my, okay, my question goes back to, you know, them having an opportunity. To be able to elaborate on that and explain it to their teachers as well.
You talk about the sped department.
Yes, because their teachers in that school, people come to the sped teacher with these questions. So our teachers have to be equipped likewise, the directors that are, that they report to on all of this, uh, the way that you're elaborating. You know, you an expert on it, you're talking.
And, and Lanier, actually, we do collaborate quite often. Yeah, I do collaborate, and, and she has questions, she'll come to, uh, Debbie or I, and we, we try to talk through some of those things. But again, when we talk about at the school level, those sped teachers are just as much entrenched.
In entrenched, yes, because those scores are gonna count period.
Yes, ma'am.
Regardless as to who's taking it.
Yes, ma'am.
The test.
Mm-hmm. That's right, you're exactly right. All right, with federal programs, the update here is basically, uh. Cornwall, and she's been doing a day of training. Presenting this, she's completed the, uh, federal program, monitored corrective action plan, which was the one we had over the summer in July. They gave, they sent us a corrective action plan, we had to turn it into the state, she's gone, went on and, uh, turned it into the state to get feedback on it, and we're moving forward with that. She's completed, uh, uh, the reports that we had, uh, for, uh, officer of federal program. She's worked with Holly, and I know they did some, uh, a meeting on Friday, but worked with Holly and the federal program to count on the expenditure report. And that is something that during the, uh, monitoring instrument, they said it wasn't doing on a regular basis, and she put that in place, and they, they knew the expenditure report on a regular basis. Now, they did have a fall, uh, literacy festival, that was last week, uh, and they had pretty good, I, uh, I guess you would say, response to that. And what they did was they have parent liaison, the parent literacy liaison, and those parent literacy liaison actually had different booths at that festival. To, uh, you know, have interaction with parents, and this was at the board and girls, uh, again, the activities were well received, and, and they did pretty well. Under the answer, we are continuing to follow the plan, uh, the plan has been S one, according to approved instructional and safety plan. Uh, S two and three are revision goals, and Holly, you might wanna, you know, make some any additions to this, but, uh. We made some needed changes for the upcoming, upcoming school year, we're looking at construction and building, uh, we started the safety guideline as it pertained to COVID. And I know we talked about, uh, trying to do some outdoor, uh, facilities for cafeteria, especially at the high school, and, and trying to get some, uh. Furniture outside, some of the furniture, I know we did, uh, or some furniture through full service, to, there was some, uh. Metal tables and other relatives to put outside so the kids can, uh, go out and eat. We wanted to do some of the same things at the elementary schools and creating, uh, outdoor classrooms. So that they would be able to use, uh, some of the areas, especially, I know Stoke Beers, they, they have some little cement areas between the classrooms, they wanted to put some furniture out there. To try to do some outdoor activities in, in outdoor classrooms, and that is some of the things that we are looking at using our, uh, S two, uh, same plan and S three for the school. Anybody got any questions on federal program? Now, we train the tape, we still, uh, currently have twenty-one full-time drivers, five sub-drivers, and some of these sub-drivers are being taken morning driver and afternoon driver. We still, we're running twenty-seven buses every day at Hope and the Ele- Elementary and secondary route. Uh, four buses are still considered spare buses and road ready. We have purchased the property, owned our, uh, owner's boulevard, and we took the old, uh, kids out. It's sort of, we are in the process to move it forward with that, uh, and cleaning that building out of, making it, has been working pretty diligently. On, uh, getting the, the building cleaned out, now what we're in the process of doing is repairs and renovations, uh, to move forward. Uh, we do have, uh, some, some things that's ordered, I know, uh, we, the, the transportation department has ordered the lift. To put in there to get ready to do all changes and things like that, uh, and two, uh, we are, we have given our ninety-eight oldest son, uh, the lot over at Water. So we're actively moving forward, what our projection is, is trying to get in the building full classes by January. So that, uh, we, we're moving in that direction, and I think we, we, we're pretty much, uh, pretty much on point right now. We did give delivery of three, the three buses that we ordered with S one phone, those three buses are gonna be twenty-two oh one, twenty-two oh two, twenty-two oh three. And the other three that we just ordered should be in delivery between this week and next week. So those are gonna be twenty-two oh four, twenty-two oh five, twenty-two oh six. So if you see those buses, those numbers, that, that will be the new buses that, uh, we have, uh. And, and I didn't put on here, we, we still, you know, as, as far as buses, that will give us those, the six buses, uh, total that we've got this year, that will be. Part of what we originally put in, what they left, so you, you still five down, but we were looking at, still looking at the master lease. And possibly doing eight, uh, eight additional buses with master lease, and, and Holly, do you wanna say anything on that?
So with S funds, we can only just get three buses?
Well, that was with the S one phone, that's what we did, and, and what we did in that sense was, uh, we used it as a, a mediation, a mitigation on. You know, spreading out the route, however, we still gotta get the most drivers to get the route spread as mo- as much as we can. So that, that's still the, the challenge, it's still getting drivers, we're still actively, uh, you know, interviewing and actively hiring drivers as they come. Uh, we do have Mr. Bosick, uh, that's helping with training. So if, when we look at, if we have somebody that's interested in driving that doesn't have a CDL, and they possibly wanna come in and drive, then we can, uh, look at, you know, get Mr. Bosick to help us in training those and working for us as a deal.
How, how are you towards getting the mechanic?
Well, actually, we advertised to a mechanic, we thought we had one, and in the negotiation stages of that, uh, something, somehow or another, it didn't pan out. We do have, uh, me- another mechanic assistant that has applied and, and has, uh, you know, interviewed, and I'm thinking he's, uh, working on recommending that one. But as far as mechanic goes, we still actively seeking. And we did look at, you know, the, the, uh, the salary and, and worked that salary. So they, they are, you know, aware of the salary, which is pretty much little, is, I would say competitive in this area right now.
So what's your, uh, date, do you have like time or date to actually be in the building?
Uh, we're trying to push for January.
Okay, oh, okay, at the beginning of the next second semester.
So that will give us the, uh, holidays to move transfer buses.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, I hit my head down.
What about the five or six buses that are sitting over in the parking lot side?
They, we can't get them to move. So what we'll probably end up doing and, and looking at those is, uh, working on certain and, and, uh, getting them off the, uh, thing. We have, we have, you got five or six, but there were more than that over there. And what we've done was we got with water, and they've come in and diagnosed, uh, the majority of the buses to just diagnose them and fix the ones that they can fix. And that was the director that I gave to Mr. Tatum to make sure that he looks at, you know, getting those to fix the ones that we can fix, get them fixed. If, if there's some that there, that he's actually used for parts, so it's not gonna be a situation where we can, you know, move down and forth. One of my things is, is the, the transmission was, is, and that's the one that's sitting in the middle of the, uh, lot is, is, is one that will not start the brake controls of the transmission arm. So we gotta try to get it towed, but it's gonna take some, the tow truck to pick it almost up and all of this move.
I was wondering that, does the night one hundred thirty?
Yeah, it's sitting in the middle, and I, 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 you know, asked about that one several times, because it is a milestone to me, my, me too. So that one there, I, I've been on it about trying to get it towed.
The one that hood has been up since the summer end.
Mm-hmm, and that was one that, that been, parts have been taken off of. So we're actually, again, working on trying to get those, uh, off them.
So you're gonna get those removed?
Anything else?
I just made note that you're gonna have those buses removed from the lot.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Oh, okay. Hello, Mr. Jacey.
Hello, how are you? Um, okay, uh, I gotta go back there quick, but, uh, website update. We are, um, mostly doing training right now. Uh, we have some final touches to make on the, uh, on the, the behind of things. I stopped to put pictures behind all the schools. Uh, again, I, uh, very open to that, thankfully, so I didn't have to go grab all the pictures myself. But we're still, we're still working on some small things here and there, uh, and getting everyone at the schools trained on it. Um, and then I'm thinking hopefully the launch date will be, uh, before the first of the next semester. Um, only reason being, we have a couple of new webpages. So we migrated all the old stuff to the new stuff for the most part, but there's a couple of new webpages that just have a blank slate because it was so messy to begin with that I decided I wasn't even gonna pull with my. Um, with that being said, I'll maybe, and on the wrong side. Um, that being said, uh, that's where we're at, that. Uh, the E-Rate five bid, I'm an advertiser for that. Uh, that is the contract through, uh, USAC E-Rate, and we paid for, um, put five into all of our schools. Uh, we're adding two locations, the Hunt and the Transportation Building, so that we, uh, wrap that into one contract. Uh, the two RFPs I'm working on for learning cameras, we're adding eight-four cameras to, um, the rest of the schools that round out, uh, the rest of the camera installations. Uh, we put two hundred, over two hundred cameras in last time. Uh, this will just finish the rest of that. Uh, and, uh, the biggest school that doesn't have is McKellar right now, uh, and I have to look at a different solution for that, um, because they're more, more mobile when they're doing, uh, their labs and such. Uh, network upgrade, uh, working with that as well, building RFPs so that we have one-on-one replacement for all of our access points and networks, which is, uh, we're gonna suck security grant, uh, that Dr. Blot made me aware of. Uh, the deadline for that is a couple of days. Um, we have to work towards NIMs, uh, compliance in order to do that. And I'm gonna assess that and talk to Dr. Blot, um, what all that involves before we submit that grant. Uh, but I'm just like, know about this, this, uh, you know, in my department as well as the rest of ours, uh, we do our best to take advantage of every grant that we have, um, and assess, you know, what all it is. Uh, with that being said, that's all I have unless you have questions for me.
That, uh, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, the two hundred and fifteen plus tickets.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that affiliated with, um, the network while we need to upgrade the network? A little network type problem?
Uh, most of those are just computer tickets, bring tickets, uh, network stuff. Network stuff, I mean, we, we need network upgrade because it hasn't done it.
Computer tickets.
Yeah, those are specific computer tickets. There are some network errors in there, um, but just on the whole, the infrastructure of the school district network line has not been touched in a very long time.
I have one quick question about the website.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, who updates it once it's set up?
Yeah, so, uh, every school has their own, uh,
Person.
Person.
And that person, all the people are being trained on it?
Yes, ma'am, that's what, that's what I was saying, we have one more training set.
Sorry, I didn't understand you.
Yeah, sorry, I, I should've been more clear. Every location has their own website manager, um, and each one of them are, are attending the training. Uh, and we have it recorded, so, you know, they can go back, refresh on it.
Thank you.
Everyone.
This is a special education, this is a special education update. Ms. Lanier was ever the join, wasn't able to join us. Um, Spear Parenting was held, um, with Spear students, um, and discussed the resource for their children. The fiscal year twenty-two application has been submitted to the Mississippi Department of Education, and they're waiting for a response. Um, during a legal conference on, with MD on November, there was a baby receipt in regard and consideration for be, for being made for five oh four and IEP as it relates to COVID. Um, and this is a very serious issue because at the federal level, there's been intense discussion about the legality of some of the things that happened during COVID as a rest of special ed. Number ten, parent focus meet, uh, group meeting will be held at Brand Essential Services. This meeting is related to, um, improving educational outcomes. Um, and, and the reason she put that is that we have to associate special education not only with accommodation but academic outcomes. And, uh, Ms. Lanier, who's in her department, has been laser focused on this, and they've been, they've done a great job. Thank you.
I have one question about, about that upcoming focus group meeting on November tenth. Do we have any idea how many parents we're expecting and making sure the word's getting out so we get as wide as participation as possible?
But generally, they, uh, talk to the voice, and she'll put something on the website or do a call out, she does a lot of that. So she'll probably give her the, the name of the students and then she'll, she'll, uh, she'll do that. So they know that, that if they wanna get mass communication, that they need to detail it with her. And some things we don't put on the website that don't pertain, I'll only generally put things on websites pertaining to everyone, not just specifically one, one thing.
I just, just wanna make sure the lines of communication are wide open.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Bryant. Board members, I'll move through as soon as possible. Uh, item ten, open forum policy, BCBD. Is anyone here? Moving right along, uh, the Office of Superintendent, uh, Dr. LeBach, travel report.
Just, uh, quickly, um, went to the, uh, uh, convening session of the League of Innovative Schools. I met with, um, some phenomenal superintendents and had the opportunity to, uh, learn some, some new and innovative things that we are gonna be implementing and working with, uh, Intel and Verizon, some other things to bring to the district, so we're excited about that. Um, was able to go to the Hill and do some, uh, lobbying for, um, for the district, um, discuss answer funds and the supply chain, um, and how they're being used. I emphasized the cameras and how important they were to be learning, um, and effective and efficiently, um, providing instruction for now and then in the future. We also talked about several, uh, the Bill Metter, um, Act, the Rebuild American Schools Grant and other school infrastructure funding and the Emergency Connectivity Fund, all related to the school district and how those particular pieces of legislation can support things that, uh, we need here in the school district. Um, some of the most important is the subsidizing of, of connectivity locally. Um, and, uh, you know, some, some, it's important to understand that if a child does not have accessibility to connectivity, them having a device is, is some, what complex. And so we just discussed how some of, some of these acts can support our, um, students in having, um, broadband connectivity by subsidizing, um, connectivity costs. And I think the cost for, in Columbus, I think it's around thirty-five dollars. And so that, that is, was an expense. So we talked about school, about infrastructure, um, and some, 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 some funds coming out of the House of Emergency and Conference Committee provisions. And that would be all, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you very much. Moving on to, um, super, superintendent recommendations. Um, number one, consideration and a discussion to approve the staff personnel items. Uh, requesting a motion for approval. Some, the motion is made by Dr. Schumay, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Spears, any discussion?
Uh, yeah, I actually have a question, a quick question. It's not on this list, but it is on the weekly report that we got from Ms., um, Woodard, wherein Mr. Hunley puts the list of the vacancies. And I think if I'm correct, Mr. Hunley, you have still eight slots you need to fill. Okay, however, and this may be just because it's a slight technicality. Um, Dr. Dito mentions in his portion of the report that the nurse position at Columbus High School is still vacant. But that vacancy, uh, which lists a nurse is not on your list. Uh, um, if you could sort of address that. Can they just be because it's not a teacher? I, I don't know.
Yeah, correct, um, the listing I give you every week is, uh, just particularly certified by, like, the teachers. But if you would like, I can broaden it to include non-certified as well.
Uh, ju- well, I, you know, the nurse is sort of important. I just wanted to make sure that was, I thought that's what it was, thank you for clarifying. How many of the non-certified, uh, slots were missing, people?
Uh, I'll go there and do a double check to make sure, but we do still have the nurse, and I think we're looking for now, uh, as an academic interventionist, uh, taking some others we need.
You can, you can get that for next time.
Sure.
Maybe you could expand that in your weekly report, that would be helpful.
Certified, certified.
Because I, I find that very helpful, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Oh, with that being asked, can I ask a question? Since there has not been a nurse at Columbus High School for an extended period of time right now, uh, do we have strategies in place where someone is, uh, going over there?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
She, she goes over and she, then we do have those nerves, uh, that piece. With, I have been interviewing for a nurse position, uh, changing and feeling the process of working out, uh, you know, your, uh, years of experience.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you very much, Mr. Hunley. Dr. Schumay, thank you. Office of Business Management, Mrs. Holly Rogers. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Go back. Uh, there was discussion, all in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. You all forgive me, this, uh, over in the meeting sometime, I'll move on without moving on. And now we will move to the Office of Business Management, Ms. Holly Rogers. And we're looking at consideration to approve our financials. Um, board, I marked here that, um, requesting a motion to approve, it would be the fund balance, cash balance, budget status, monthly revenue, monthly expenditure, certification and summary of reconciling statements, whereas there are several requesting a motion for approval.
So, ma'am.
The motion is made by Mr. Spears, I'll make the second, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to, uh, monthly ad blor and tax collection analysis, are there any questions, board? Any comments? H, fund balance trends. Bank cash balance, yearly comparisons. The athletic event report. I know this isn't the right time, it may not be the right time, but, uh, athletics, our football team almost went to the playoffs. Moving right along to number, um, requesting a motion to consider and discuss the budget amendment. Motion is made by, um, Schumay. I'll make the second, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. I, consideration and a discussion to approve fixed assets depose disposals. Requesting a motion for approval, some, motion made by Dr. Schumay, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Spears, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. A motion, claim docket. A motion to, uh, approve our claim docket, requesting a motion. Motion is made by Mr. Spears, I'll make the second, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Federal programs and IDA monthly financial reviews. Board, do we have any, uh, questions, concerns regarding this, any comments? Yes, ma'am? No, I don't have any. Okay, moving right along, I don't have any either. This guy. Moving on to our consent agenda, which is item BCBL. Uh, board, uh, what I'd like to do at this point is I'm requesting a motion to approve the monthly policy review updates, policy BD, policy BDB, policy BDE, which will include, um, number, oh, one, A, B, and B would be number one through seven. Uh, requesting a motion to approve the, uh, policies, reviewing updates. And that's number one through seven. The motion is made by Mr. Spears, requesting a second, second, second by Dr. Schumay, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. I'm flipping paper, going and writing in a second. B, uh, consideration to approve agreements, contracts, memorandums, understanding, out of state travel and field trips. This includes our, uh, crisis management plan for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. The request for bidding for, uh, learning cameras and, um, the network updates, the MO, MOU with, uh, the network updates, the M O, M O U with, uh, J D C. And, uh, looking at all dates, the athletics, um, extracurricular activity printout, thank you for that. And the, uh, upcoming board meetings, which would be, uh, our review meeting that's on the first and that's at eleven thirty. Our quarterly retreat, which is, which is eight thirty, uh, on the fourth. And our regular meeting, which is on the sixth. I know that's a lot of meetings, board, but we'll try to work through this, uh, together as much as possible. A request of motion for approval. So moved, the motion is made by Dr. Schumay, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Spears, any discussion?
I have one question, just to clarify. On the memorandum of understanding between C M S D and the Juvenile Attention Center, it says that this is entered into, is on July first, twenty twenty one. I don't know legally if that makes any difference because it's not being signed until November or wherever we are.
Yeah.
No, I think that's great. My only question was, in theory, I mean, so it's retroactive to July first, once it's signed? Okay, I mean, it's fine with me, I just wanna make sure it doesn't mess up the memorandum. Thank you. Okay, Dr., uh, Mr. Spears?
The only question I really have is, are we, is, are we current on all collections for other districts that have to pay to us for students?
Uh, really because of COVID last year, there weren't any invoices announced at other school districts. We were already bringing marks for J D C and we were all, we already have a teacher who's been there. This may be a common issue, if I may, I did an audit out of our program just to make sure that we didn't miss anything. But we are caught up in all the other areas.
Oh, we haven't spent money that we have collected.
Okay, um, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. At this time, I'd like to thank, uh, each and every one of you for being patient with us and attending our school board meeting for this morning. And, um, requesting a, a motion to adjourn. Motion is made by Mr. Spears, second by Dr. Schumay, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Thank you all so very much.